All computer problems solved?
Hello, everybody. We call this meeting of the New Shoreham Town Council to order. Today is Wednesday, April 17th. It is 7:01 PM, which may be some kind of record over the last few weeks. We'll begin our meeting tonight with any public comment. Chris? It's good to see you. Is this about deer?
I have a question for the town council.
Yes.
Regarding what's going on with the mansion property. I was down there yesterday and it looks exactly as it did over a year ago. And the last thing I heard was that there was going to be a survey. And that was quite some time ago. So I'm asking, what's up?
I will. Am I able to put that on an agenda because of the ongoing?
I can tell what's going on with the survey that the town solicitor is working on getting a survey. We couldn't six-year-old one locally. He did it's Nick in particular. He did get one bid and he was requesting a second bid. So that we have two bids to compare it for the costs associated with this survey. And that's correct, Nick, right? You're waiting on the second bid?
Yes, spot on. Thank you.
Well, like I say, it just seems like over years, a long time to go with something as glaring as that. You know, it could be as much as 25 or 30 feet of town land. It's now basically some jar.
I do know, Chris, it's really hard. Cue for a survey is long. It's been hard to get surveys.
All right. And the second thing, I know nobody probably, maybe nobody's thought of it. Maybe they haven't. Two places in the town. Where you might want to think about lead and I don't know if anyone has, but one is the John Thomas property. Up on High Street. Has anyone ever tested up there for lead? Soil?
I don't know.
Well, I was involved in cleaning out that place after John Thomas passed away. And I probably took between 20 and 30 gallons of paint up to Allen's Avenue. Outside Providence for disposal at the hazardous waste site. And all that white paint was lead paint. And he painted religiously. Believe me, that place was well painted and well covered with paint. So and the second, you know, a lot of people have lived up there. I don't know. Not so much the inside, but the outside. And then the second thing. Probably no one's thought of this either, but the airport. Property where they're doing the excavation and all the soil has been moved up near Fresh Pond. They do testing all over the country for lead. Because whether people realize it or not, all piston engine aircraft. And helicopters still use leaded gas. Every day and it's. The way it comes out of the exhaust of a plane. It just kind of filters down to the ground, whatever the prevailing wind direction is. And bear in mind that that airport's been there a long time. There've been a lot of flights in and out of that airport since the 50s. And larger airports, a lot of places are using jets now, so they're not using as much avgas, but. Before that soil went anywhere and especially that area. It might not be a bad idea to just. Just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
Might be something you want to look at because it rains down everywhere.
Yeah.
Antucket is one you should look at because there's no such thing as a little bit. Of bad lead. It's all bad.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons it's just, so anyway, there you go. Thank you.
Wonder whether Ryac has a protocol.
One thing under public comment?
Sure, why not?
Um, so the Leo Club is on the 28th of this month, having a harbor to harbor cleanup. And hoping everybody will put that on their calendar to participate. It's open to the entire public. This would be cleaning. Litter trash out of New Harbor, Old Harbor, adjacent to and along Ocean Avenue, the waterways. Along that route, Negus Park. So if you, if somebody has a. Particular area that they want to clean, they can get in touch with me and I will put them on the Leo's list. Otherwise, we'll send out information on bulletin board where people can sign up later in about five days.
Do you know what time and where the meeting place is?
So it's going to be nine to 12 and I do not know where the meeting place is because I have to fix, or we have to fix one more detail.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for doing all that stuff, Molly. I really appreciate it. Any other public comment tonight? No? Moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to ask, I'd like the letter C to be considered outside of the consent agenda. Frankly, it's not that I have a problem with any of it, but it's a lot of dough and it ought to be called out, I think, beyond just a. A simple consent item. So we'll take that up after we take up the consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions, et cetera, before we move to vote?
I have two. On two sets of agendas, I have the same correction to make on the Thursday, April 4th. And Tuesday, April 9th. Minutes. Yeah. So in both sets of minutes. It. Has me.
So four, nine. And what's the other one?
April 4th.
Yeah.
April 9th.
Okay.
It incorrectly says that I want to cut the early learning center budget. In half, which is not.
Right.
That is not what I said. My intent was to cut the town funding. To half of their operating budget. So we were giving $147,000. And I was proposing closer to $141,000. So not cutting their budget in half, but just by $6,000.
Right.
Okay, can I just shoot the dollars figure I'm looking at here?
Right. So in the, I guess what I was, what I was saying is that. That in the initial request from the early learning center, the town was. Funding them at a rate higher than half of their operating budget. And I was saying, let's pull that back to half, that we were only going to. To propose only funding them at half of their operating budget. So not. Not a 72,000 cut, but a 6,000 cut. Thanks. And the other thing on the consent.
I do think it, the dollar amount is a better way of putting it because I didn't understand.
Yeah. I don't have the number with me, but there was some, it was like 6,000 and change, but.
Do we need a motion to change those, Millie? Or can you just?
I think you're just.
Okay, great. Can I have a motion to, are you all square? Sorry.
I have this one other item. I wonder if we could talk about separately?
What? I can't see what it is. I'm sorry.
The hazard mitigation plan update consultant.
That's what I just took off.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Got it.
So the consent agenda is letters A, B. And D. Can I have a motion to approve it? Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Now we're on to C award bids. First up is Kim Jacobs for the revision of the 2017 Block Island Hazard Mitigation Plan for $44,700. This one. On the numbers is unusual, but, but Mary Ann, you feel Kim Jacobs is the right person?
Yes. So just for information for the council and everyone else, this was a request for proposal, request for qualifications. So it's not a flat bid amount. And Allison, where for surely they review the proposals and. The individual that they award in this bid, it states in the memo that she's completed a number of hazardous mitigation plans for coastal communities. And it, and her expertise probably better match what we're trying to accomplish here. So I would move forward with the recommendation that's being proposed for this.
Molly, you had a question?
Thanks. Can I work for a second? It's hard to hear.
Okay.
I zoom all the time. You know what that's you? Are you from Cranston or?
I'm from Black Island, I'd like to think.
But you gotta turn the mics up because you can't hear.
I'll speak louder. I'll use my, I'll use my mother's voice.
Okay, Tristan tells me I'm deaf, so.
What?
Boy's coming to be right there.
So I just want to make a comment. So $15,000 seems like a big differential. I get, did the other candidate not have any experience? And why were they bidding on it? I don't want to question you guys going through it, but.
I mean, even if you look at this and see where the other bid is from.
Well, that's right.
You know, that tells you 90%.
Okay.
I mean, the other bid is from Anchorage, Alaska.
Right.
Bid in on a, a hazard mitigation plan for a coastal community 13 miles off the coast of Rhode Island. So they probably saw the bid and just really not, not aware of what that would mean.
They probably think, they probably think apart of New York anyway.
I mean, I sort of have to agree with Neil. That's why I had this flagged because that's a big difference in price and is this. Is this just like a rewrite? I don't, if you could explain what this is, is it just a rewriting of the document? In which case, would it matter where they are?
The plan has to be upgraded, updated, and there's extensive spreadsheets that you have. Allison had started it, but because it's so much work with her current work. She applied for this grant, got the grant, and therefore she's passing along. There are a number of meetings you have to have. They're meeting with a lot of staff and stakeholders. To go through, you know, hazardous mitigation, hazardous sites and things like that nature on the island. You know, again, I am confident with what their recommendation is on this. And I didn't even think to check whether fear, fear. Fear weather signs is a business in Rhode Island.
So instead of paying Allison's hourly rate. We're going to be paying. Five, $4,500.
Correct.
Because 40,000, 45,500 is coming from a federal grant.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay, so it's covered by a grant?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it states that in the, in the letter, in the opening sentence.
Well, but it wasn't, yeah, I wasn't clear that that was for this entire project. Okay.
Any other, any other questions?
Item number four, the electrical installation, can we speak to that distance? The total run? It's both units, correct? Is Tom in the room?
Correct. It's both. Yeah, Tom, it's both units.
How far is that total distance? Just a brief overview of the school.
So we need to come over from a pole in front of the, by the flagpole of the school. Go under High Street and come up at a splice box. Go to the Thomas house and then to the back house on separate runs because each unit of the four will have a separate meter. So each building will get its own feed and then they'll split at the dual meters.
So you're going across High Street then?
Somehow.
Somehow. You're not going to pick up the pole on the east side?
I could, or the, or the north side or the south side. Depending. So the pole in front of the Soul Pond or in front of Bethany's house.
Yeah. Okay. And then how about on the laterals on number? Five. Did they stub in the laterals already or do they have to do a road cut?
No, there's, there is a drain type manhole that's serving the manager's house now. And, and the existing Thomas house. Those two that will stay and we're going to put an E1 at the new building and pump it up to there.
So both units are going to be pumped or one?
No, the current Thomas house is grabbing.
Okay.
And the back one will be down about 10 feet, so it'll be pumped.
Up to the new manhole that's already existing?
Existing now. It's not a manhole because it's in the yard, but.
So we're doing new street cut and that's 90,000?
That was their estimate.
Is there any other bits?
No.
On either of the three or four?
No, no, they all got one bit.
Just one bit.
It tends to be. Or that can, that tends to be a constant.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, you said to me before the meeting, we're not going to, you would, you would like us to not award the final grading and landscaping?
That's correct.
In this.
Correct.
Trish, because it's not ready. It'll be at the end of the project. Is that?
The end of the project and we're running tight on funding with this, so I want to be sure.
Gotcha.
And that grading and landscaping may be less of a scope as we get the houses put in and things of that nature.
All right. I would make a motion to rebid four and five. Or the entire package. If it's clear, or I can just single out those two items.
So you want to rebid them?
Yep.
Tom, do you have any?
We could do that. They were duly advertised for the required period and nobody. And forth except the contractor that does all the town work now, which has gone electric. I can go out and solicit bits, you know, shake the trees and see what you come up with. The houses, the house is on a short cycle, but those are coming in obviously after the houses are set. So we have a couple of weeks. If you want to do that, I can do it.
All right. Well, again, I'll state, I'd make a motion to rebid four and five.
I'll second that. If, if it's not going to, if it's not going to postpone the work. Seems like shaking the trees is not a terrible idea. Is that right?
Okay.
I don't want to do anything to slow the project down.
It shouldn't.
Shouldn't. Okay. All those in.
I just had a question on HVAC. So is that for one property? Is that for, is that?
Both.
All properties?
Yes.
And is it ductless or is it?
It's, it's ducted for the first floor and heat pump for the second floor. And that's the contractor that has done all of the Connecticut Valley homes on the island in the last couple of years. So they're very familiar with working with modular homes.
So we have a motion on the floor to rebid what? Number four, which is electrical installation and number five. Five, which is plumbing installation?
Yes.
Is there, those, those two ideas?
We're allowed. Yes. Four and five.
Four and five. All those in favor indicate by saying aye? Opposed, no? All right, the remainder. So eight is, is, is not being considered. So we would be considering the Kim. Do you want to do separate on Kim Jacobs, guys? Are you okay with doing all these together in one motion? Happy either way.
Kathy, you need to come to the.
I hate that. I just am curious.
Yeah, but the fact that you hate it doesn't mean that we don't do it.
We hate it too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way, Kathy. Please come up to the microphone. We make everybody come.
It's what I want.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I've just never seen it. That's all. I just never.
All right, back to where we were. Now that we've decided to rebid those two things, is everybody comfortable with a single motion on little I and little, and little III?
Yes.
Can someone make a motion to approve those? Again? Millie, are you clear on that motion? Eight is not being considered. Four and five are being rebid. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. All right. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing to hear the proposed amendments? This is what, the third? We did.
I'm sorry.
Yes. No, we did. We did. We pulled that out and we voted on the entire consent. This is, I believe, the third set, Jen? Is this the third set of? Third or fourth new ordinance that is. Essentially required under the new state zoning law. And I'm not sure who's going to lead. Is it Karen or Ashley or? Ashley, do you want to, do you want to lead on walking the council through this? Thank you very much for being here tonight. I thought, I thought I did. No? Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? In a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. This is the third or fourth set of new ordinances to bring our ordinances in conform, in conformance with. The new state law. Ashley, can you do a basic backgrounder for us, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I actually have just a couple of quick slides. If that would help kind of walk you through this document, I can share my screen and do that.
You've just exceeded my technical understanding and expertise. So that's. That's a question from Molly. From Millie, excuse me. Okay, you can share.
All right. Just give me one second. Not as easy as I wanted it to be with only one screen of mine. Hold on one second. So can you see that?
Yes.
All right. So I apologize if you guys are at the bottom of my screen, but I can't move you anywhere else. So the sections that we have for you tonight have to do with non-conforming lots. So the document that you have in front of me, there's a couple of pieces to this. Article one, section 113E2 relates to substandard lots of record. This is a requirement for a change in the state law that you have a provision for how to handle substandard lots of record. And these are lots that, whoops, sorry. These are lots that are dimensionally somehow non-conforming. And the provision requires that you have to permit those lots to automatically receive a proportional reduction for their setbacks or for their dimensional standards. Based on the amount of non-conformance by, by area. So I've given you an example here, not a real example, just a. Something to kind of walk you through how this works, but if you have a 20,000 square foot lot in a 40,000 square foot minimum zoning district. That lot is 50% non-conforming by area and that 50%. Non-conforming by area is what sets the proportional reduction for the setbacks. So when the lot is 50% non-conforming by area, all the setback requirements, all the dimensional standards, so your side yard, your front yard, your rear yard. Setback requirements are also proportionally reduced by 50%. And the lot coverage allowance, how much of the lot you're allowed to actually cover with structures is increased by the inverse proportional. In this case, because it's 50%, that's also a 50% increase to the lot coverage allowance. Does anyone have any questions before I move on to the next section?
I'm pretty good at this normally. I have no idea what's going on here.
So you, you have some language. You'll see in that section that there's a significant amount of language that's struck. You had a provision in there previously that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't make myself clear enough. What you just said is what I'm talking, I'm talking to specifically. The lot, so. If I had a two acre lot. In a three acre zone. How much would the lot coverage be, the lot coverage be increased?
So like I said, it's a proportional reduction. So if you have a two acre lot in a three acre zone, you basically have. Your 33% non-conforming because you only have, you have two thirds of what's allowed. So your setbacks would be reduced by that 33%. So it's a proportional reduction of the setbacks and it's basically a proportional increase of the lot coverage. Proportional to how, how much the lot is lacking by area. Does that help?
That's what I thought it was. It doesn't sound right.
The language that's, that's in there now. I'm sorry.
I use, I use an example. I live on a road that has a lot of very small lots. Less than an acre. Five or six of them. And. They, they're built on now, but does this mean that? If they're less than an acre in a three acre zone. What they can cover. Would be much greater?
Yes.
That's the way I understand this. It didn't, it didn't seem right, but I guess that's what it is.
Yeah, I mean, the, the premise behind this requirement is that. If your lot is substandard by size in, for the zoning district that you're in. You should automatically receive a reduction of the setback requirements and a proportional increase of the lot coverage. Because if you apply the standards for the district that you're in to a lot that's smaller than what's in the district. You're restricting the location and the area that can be utilized on the lot. And so the idea being. Somebody who has a smaller lot than the zoning districts that they're in would, would have, would not have to automatically go for a variance. Because they couldn't meet the setbacks of the zoning district. That's the premise behind the, the requirement. There are, are lots of communities, including New Shoreham, that had their own provisions in the zoning order. New Shoreham that had their own provisions in the zoning ordinance that did address this issue. But the state law changed and mandated that it be done a certain way as a proportional reduction. So the language that you see that struck from your zoning ordinance under this is the way that you previously addressed it, but that's no longer consistent with state law. So you have to adopt their proportional reduction standard. So you had language in there that said that when a lot is substandard, that there is some kind of reduction of the setbacks, but it wasn't what the law says it has to be now. So we've amended that language to reflect the law, the state law requirement, which is based on that proportional reduction of area.
What percentage of our lots, Jen, I don't know whether you know this off offhand, what what percentage of our lots are are nonconforming? So Ashley, I don't want to interrupt you as you're going through, but but just to sort of earmark it, I think this cries out for a a broader discussion about how we classify nonconforming and conforming, how we, you know, like it just that just seems like seventy six percent of the lots now getting bonus density seems to be a significant change.
Yeah, I mean, I I think this has come up in a lot of municipalities that have a couple of of these types of areas, like, for instance, in, you know, in the salt ponds in Charlestown, South Kingstown, this is, there's been discussions about the impacts of this on on kind of those lake, those lake communities where these were original, you know, three season or two season homes. They were constructed on very small lots. Those have all been upgraded and turned into year round occupancy. They're still on very small lots. And those those areas around these lakes, in order to prevent further subdivision of small lots and to preserve the, you know, water quality, have gone to larger lot zoning. And so now you have, in some cases, five thousand square foot lots in one acre zones or two acre zones, which, when you do that math, you're looking at massive proportional reductions. You know, eighty percent, seventy five percent reductions of the setbacks for the district. So what some communities are talking about doing in those circumstances is looking at, and this would be, you know, a much longer term solution, but looking at those areas that are significantly undersized lots for the zoning districts that they're located in and making a decision about, you know, what is the offset of if we were to actually change the zoning district to something much closer to the actual lot size? You would significantly reduce those proportional reductions of setbacks. But also, at the same time, you need to look at, are you opening areas for further potential development that wasn't there? So it's a, you know, it's a kind of a trade off situation. It will work in some places. It won't work in other places. But that is something that people are talking about to address the concern that you raised, which is that you would have lots in certain areas of towns that are getting huge proportional reductions to their setback requirements.
Ashley, I'm not sure whether this is in your purview, so you can feel free to ignore me. But Karen and Jen and Mary Ann, I do think that it would be worthwhile to 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 really talk about this in some detail and brainstorm what what an appropriate strategy would be. And we can have some people from planning as well, just. I understand that we have to do it. I feel even more so on this one than I did on the others that, though I did feel that way on the others, that I I fear some some I hate the phrase, but some unintended consequence or maybe some intended consequence of this change. And I have not quite wrapped my head around around it.
Can I?
What was?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Molly.
No, you go ahead.
What was the impetus? Was this a lawsuit and then the legislature did it or how did how did this come about?
This was part of the the speaker's housing package that was passed at the twenty twenty three session. This is just one of the components of those bills. The intent, the overall intent is to increase housing production.
I think.
I think there's there's a lot of questions about how effective these will be, but that's the overall premise or reason behind these bills.
I I think there, I think there was a feeling that there were towns, not ours, that were using zoning ordinances as a way to keep affordable housing out of towns. But as Ashley says, I this is such a whack a mole, I don't, you know, I I I'm just not, I'm just not sure.
So I have a question, Ashley, about, so you just said that, like, there could be some consideration of changing the zoning. But we don't have an area, like, when you look at, like, Great Island, right? That's all teeny tiny little lots over in Point Judith area, right? We don't have anything like that out here. So what we have is like a tiny lot next to an oversized lot next to a can, a lot that conforms. It's like, it's very hodgepodge, like, it doesn't, it's not like you run into a neighbor, not well, there are a couple, but like, you don't run into many areas where you have all substandard lots of a quarter acre. So do you think it's possible to do some sort of zoning strategy that takes into consideration the inconsistency in size from one lot to the next when they're adjacent to one another?
Um, yeah, I mean, you raise a good point because the strategy that I mentioned that some communities are looking at, where they have these clusters of substandard lots. And then they've they've increased the the zoning requirements over those in terms of what's required in the zoning district. That won't work if you have this kind of mismatch of different sizes of lots and the substandard lots are kind of scattered throughout. That that approach doesn't exactly work because if you rezone based on the small lots, then you're opening up a lot more potential for development on those larger lots because you've just now made the ability for them to get more lots out of their larger lot. So that strategy definitely would not probably be beneficial in those circumstances. And I'm I'm sure there are creative ways to address the issue. I don't have those right now off the top of my head, but I'm certain that, you know, conversation and some strategy, you know, and some creativity, you could come up with some mechanism to minimize the impact.
I I guess I, this Martha again. I feel like to make the point that there are, in fact, a significant number of small lot areas around here. There were time periods before zoning was passed, when land was platted. And you ended up with, I mean, I can't remember now, when I was on zoning, there were some that were just tiny and they were preexisting nonconforming. And and there are a good number of those blocks still left. If anybody looks at the plat map or has had plat maps, copies of plat maps in their house since the plat maps were adopted, they would might have a better understanding. This this is not a place. I I think the problem that we're looking at here is probably the same problem that other coastal places are having, I'd say particularly coastal places, where there were these small lots, places like, you know, like Jerusalem or I don't even know if that that's still owned by the same person, maybe San Diego is a better example. And we've all seen these little houses get bigger and bigger. And they're right on the shore. And and there's suddenly, you know, those winds have prevailing winds have kind of been shifting lately and people are suddenly on the mainland realizing that we have winter storms. And I I just don't see how something like this, what's the deadline on this? What is what is the drop dead date? I'm getting this past.
January first of this year. It's already effective in state law. So it's it's already a requirement that supersedes your current zoning language. We're just making it codified in your in your own zoning ordinance.
We can't just like get out of zoning it altogether, can we?
So should I make a motion to approve the changes?
We want to come out of the public hearing and then act. And I really, Millie, I guess I say this to you, I I I do think we need a brainstorming session at some at an upcoming meeting with Karen and Jen. You know, maybe some of the folks from planning and zoning, just to talk about the implications and what potential policy response we could make and what the implications of this policy responses are because you know, I don't know, this makes me nervous for some reason. Yeah. Yeah. Is there any other? Is there any, David?
David Lewis, before you close the public hearing, I'm just curious, are there other slides on different topics in this presentation that we should be hearing?
Yes, I think.
Because a lot of the community is hearing some of this for the first time, so easily displayed on paper and having someone to narrate it. So if there's more there, we should hear it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ashley?
Yeah.
Do you have more?
I do. Yep. We have another, so the article one, section one thirteen E three is not labeled as a merger provision, but that's essentially what that that language is. And the requirement now, so a merger, just for everyone's understanding, a merger provision is basically when you have something in your zoning ordinance that says that when you have substandard lots of record that are adjacent to each other and under the same ownership. And these are lots that are not developed. So you can't do this to two lots that have structures on them. But if you have two substandard lots of record, they're adjacent to each other, they're in the same ownership and they're undeveloped lots. The lots essentially merge for the purposes of zoning, so they merge by use. They don't, the lot line in between them doesn't disappear until you do an administrative subdivision. They stay on the tax rolls as two separate lots. They are taxed independently, but they're not allowed to be used independently. And the purpose behind this is to make areas of nonconforming lots conform more to the zoning district in which they're located when they're owned by the same person. This, that was something that was not, it wasn't required, but many communities did adopt merger provisions into their zoning ordinances. The state changed the law on merger provisions. And now in order to have a merger provision, you have to have it in a way that complies with the state law. And the state law says that you cannot enforce the merger of those lots if the area is equal to or greater than the area of fifty percent of the lots within two hundred feet of the subject lot. So what we've done is we've written that into your zoning ordinance, but we've also put a requirement in there, which is in addition to what the state law says, that that has to be confirmed by the zoning official through the submission of a survey. So if someone has two lots in the same ownership, they're not a developed lots, and they want to say those lots are not mergeable by this merger provision, they have to get a survey done. That survey has to be submitted. And it has to show that the lots within two hundred feet of the perimeter of the lot, the lot subject to merger are either equal to or greater than in size fifty percent of the lots within two hundred feet.
Wow.
All right.
So so can you use our zoning and give an example of two lots and walk us through that?
Well, before before we go to that, this is only undeveloped lots. What if you have one that's developed and one's not developed?
That's depend, that depends. You you can enforce a merger provision if one is developed and one is not developed. You cannot enforce a merger provision if they are both developed because you can't put, you can't put the two lots, you know, you'd have two houses on one lot. Most merger provisions are when they neither lot is developed, but there's nothing that says that you can't force the on the undeveloped lot to merge with the developed lot. You just can't enforce that provision if they can prove that their lots are equal to or greater than fifty percent of the lots within two hundred feet. So to, I'll give you a an easy example. You've got two, you know, twenty five thousand square foot lots in a forty thousand square foot zoning district. Those lots are owned by the same person. They are not developed lots. That person could not independently use those two lots. They could not pull building permits for both of those lots. They could only pull a permit for one lot. If they, if they cannot meet that fifty percent or greater provision. So if they cannot prove that fifty percent or greater of the lots within two hundred feet are, you know, the same size or larger, then you could enforce a merger provision on them. And that would only be allowed to be used as a single lot.
Could I ask just for clarification? This is if we put a merger provision in, do we have?
You have, you have a merger provision, so we've amended your merger provision to match the state law requirement.
Okay.
You don't have to have a merger provision, but because you already had one, we had to make it consistent with state law.
Got it. Thank you.
Where the heck are the plat maps?
So if there are no other questions, those are the two, these are, those are the two slides that I have for you that really explain a majority of what you're seeing in those text changes. The sections below are really just reflecting what we've done in the nonconformance section where we had to make some alterations to the way that it explained how those lots are laid out or how those, how how dimensionally what you're supposed to do with those lots that are nonconforming.
Are there any other, yes, thank you.
Hey, LeBron.
Good, Jim, thank you.
Just curious, how would this impact affordable housing? I think our lots on Beacon Hill probably, you know, considered substandard. So the limits of our expansion, which is all written down and all that, would they change based on this?
That's a, that's a really good question, Ashley or Karen or Jen. So an affordable housing development gets one exists where the lot size is smaller by deed presumably, right?
It's it's.
By subdivision.
It's cluster, isn't it?
It depends on the subdivision.
I mean, yet the baby can help.
Can I just ask this question?
I'm sorry, can I be clarified that?
Now I'm more confused. So Jim asked a question that I think is 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 an interesting one, which is by subdivision, those are, those are smaller lots. They were purchased, you know, with the understanding that they could only, you know, they only had so much room. Uh, and now under this law, are they granted, um, uh, an opportunity to expand, uh, beyond what the subdivision created? No?
So a lot has to exist as of March fourth nineteen eighty-nine. Our bottom record has to exist, um, prior to March fourth nineteen eighty-nine for Beacon Hill. That, that's a subdivision, so it has clear, uh, dimensional standards on the subdivision and most of the subdivisions for affordable housing have building envelopes, so all of that would have to be amended for each subdivision in order to.
I see.
Qualify.
That's really helpful. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Sad answer, Jim. This is a good question. It's something I hadn't thought of that made me think, oh, gosh. Anybody else have any comment? Ashley, do, is there anything else you'd like to bring for us? Karen, any thoughts?
That's everything I have for you.
No, that's all I, I have.
I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no. Uh, the item is now before us, um. Uh, none of us likes having to vote for something. You know, uh, but I do, um, I do think either, uh, Jen or Karen, or to the extent that it's within her purview, Ashley is probably hearing about things every day that municipalities are considering in this regard. Uh, you know, I'm sure it's not, uh, the, the concerns are probably not unique to us, I would imagine, you're correct. Um, so I, I really would like on a relatively tight timetable to at least start brainstorming on this. Um, around, uh, thoughts that, uh, you or Jen might have, um. Uh, I was at planning when I, when, when I think this, when this one was done, I think, and, um, I think some of the members of planning were sort of, it's like, you know, what is, what does this all mean? I think we're all in the what does this all mean stage and, and the more proactive we can be, the, uh, the better. Uh, while still painting inside the line of the statutory mandate, so. Um. Are there any other comments on this? Tristan, are you reaching for your microphone? Um, Molly, you're gonna make a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Sorry.
Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
I'm. I'm voting against it. I understand.
Well, we'd all like to vote against it.
Well, I, I understand, I understand, well, I voted.
Yeah, exactly.
Well. I would give a reason.
Well, uh, your reason is probably the same as everybody else who stepped up to the plate and, and, and conformed with the state mandate.
I understand that, and I think that the state mandate is, the intention behind the state mandate is a lot of, I don't think that it is something that is meeting the, um, going to meet in any way the objective in a community like Block Island. I think it may very well in some towns, but I don't think it is in coastal communities. And I can't put conscious vote in favor of it. And I understand it's gonna be state mandate regardless of whether we vote for it or not.
But we're stepping up to the plate to vote on something that is, that is a statutory mandate.
I understand.
And, and Martha, it's not, so this is a change to existing languages in our ordinance that are not compliant with state law. I, I understand the point you're trying to make, but our, our ordinance have to be aligned legally. So it doesn't matter, it carried anyway, but, yeah.
Okey dokey. Thank you, Martha.
I think the objective is good. I think it's kind of accomplishing.
The objective has already been achieved because it's state law, so that someone can just go to court and say that our, our ordinances do not conform with the state statute.
Going to conform.
Moving on to item number four, a request that we have before us from the commissioner for motor vehicles for hire to add a section to the motor vehicles for hire ordinance regarding courtesy vehicles and set a public hearing date. I'm not at a point, uh, to set a public hearing, uh, I don't, I don't know, uh, I, I'd like to hear about the idea. Yes, 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 but, uh, who wants to lead off? Brad or Judy or? Whomever.
Well. It's been brought to the motor vehicles for hire, you know, attention. Okay, that, you know, um, there is no definition in our ordinances for what a courtesy vehicle is. And in many cases, over the past few years, you know, it, the feeling is that they've been used, uh, much like a taxi on the island that performing is, as you see on the memo for you, uh, without necessarily proper insurance inspections, uh, driver licensing. Um, and for the safety of, uh, or safety inspections and to clarify with the passenger what a courtesy vehicle is. Um, so we feel so, there's a need to clarify it with what it is specifically and to, um, uh, add that to our ordinance as well, okay, and, and, uh, that, that regards to, you know, that, uh, a driver should have a chauffeur's, state chauffeur's license, meaning that they have to be twenty-one, not under twenty-one doing that. That the vehicle should have to go through proper, have proper insurance for that, as for the safety of the passengers that are in it, as well as the, the, um, the town itself too. Um, and then, um, you know, that they should have to do safety inspections. In cases, there have been vehicles that are out of inspection, okay, but they've still been operating. Okay, not necessarily currently, but that has happened in the past. Uh, and that no compensation for this shall be taken as far as, you know, um, you know, the, obviously the owner can pay them, but, you know, tips, that sort of thing are not supposed to be is, uh, are considered compensation by state law and really are not, um, a, a form of solicitation that, that should be worked with. Um, and what we're suggesting that the drivers' courtesy vehicles should be required to have a valid chauffeur's license from the state. Uh, must be twenty-one years of age, um, and there should be a background check, just like with any, uh, licensed taxi holder or driver on the island right now. And the proper vehicle insurance should be done as well, whether or not the town decides that there should be a specific license for it, which is probably what should happen. Um, there should also be a police, uh, an annual police inspection for the vehicle for safety purposes.
Hmm. Thank you for, uh, doing all the work on this. Any other thoughts about this? I'd, I'd love to hear. Go ahead, Pat. Are you getting off?
No.
Okay. Thoughts from the council on this?
Well, there's something called call and demand in the Rhode Island law. Um, I know our taxis fall under our own code, um, but it specifies, um, a license that requires point-to-point definition not to be, um, treated differently. So from the standpoint of a shuttle, it does appear there's some language in the law that allows a shuttle. But from point A to point B, I don't know about all the other logistics on it, but. So, I mean, it, it seems like there could be something legal research done to identify what Rhode Island's currently doing.
I was, I was actually, oh, I'm sorry, Judy.
Do you, Laura? Basically, um, it's not that we don't. Uh, courtesy vehicles are allowed and people can have them if they want to. It's just that it's about the safety of the people and the people driving these vehicles should, the vehicles themselves and the people the driving should be, uh, licensed in a way that they can be looked at and made sure that everything is going well and it's safe. So if, I, I think anybody driving people around the island should have to have, uh, a chauffeur's license and have the background check.
Hmm.
So basically, it's just for safety purposes. It's not to take their courtesy vehicles away from them. It's just to add restrictions to what they can do, so they aren't acting like a taxi.
Terrific, thank you, Judy.
I've got a broader question, um, who's, Brad, are you answering these questions?
Uh, I do.
The way it's written, courtesy vehicles are used by businesses to pick up or discharge their clientele to exit or enter new showroom at the ferry's airport. Um. There's nothing here that says that restricts in any way what kind of business.
Well, I mean, historically.
I know historically, we, I, we, I think we all know historically it's the hotels, basically.
No.
But you, but, but this opens it up, if you just leave it this broad, you're going to have, uh, contractors. You're going to have, um, anybody who's doing business has clients coming from the mainland. Is that, is that your intent?
What we doing?
For the courtesy people, not for, with the courtesy vans?
With.
I mean, individuals pick, pick up people, but, um.
It's a van, it's, it's a car, whatever vehicle they're using to pick up whoever.
Yeah, sorry, Judy. It's my fault. I'm reading.
Therefore.
Right, I, I'm. I'm talking, if, if, I'm talking, um, do, just, do you want to make some better definition, a broad, more specific definition?
That can be done.
I mean, the, the, the intent is for local businesses and those are the ones that are operating courtesy vehicles.
But you.
Okay, you don't, you don't see a contractor from the mainland coming over here and running a courtesy vehicle, because they're not a local business. Okay, we're, we're talking local business. That's a courtesy vehicle, at least by our definition, it's been a locally operated business that's running a courtesy vehicle. And, and that might be to pick someone up to go to their place of business for the, the type of business that they do, all right? But it's not to go all around the island and, and, and the person driving that vehicle and the vehicle itself should be properly licensed for safety purposes. You know, we're like, the taxis are like limited to fifteen passengers at max, including the driver. And you don't want to see a, uh, something that's doing even more than that.
Yeah, I think, I think we, I, I mean, I think everybody appreciates the, the safety, the licensing, the, uh, the things that should be done anyway. I'm just, I mean, if you want to leave it that way, that's fine, because it seems like it's very broad.
I, 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 Neil raised, uh, a question that I don't know anything about, which is the underlying state statute. So my thought on this is I would really like, uh, Nick to take a look at this. Uh, not just this, but to, to, to give us a brief, Nick, if you're okay, on what, what the state statute governing these shuttles is. Uh, so that at the very least we're conforming to that. Uh, and that our ordinances reflect that. And then if there are other things we want to, we, if someone wanted to consider, we could, we can consider that. But I don't, I don't feel like I know enough about, about what the underlying statute, uh, requires.
I mean, some types of courtesy vehicles you're gonna find on the island, you're not gonna generally find on the mainland.
Yeah.
To Martha's point, you're looking at mostly hotels, that sort of thing, especially airport shops.
Right.
Okay, however, you know, on a, on a, on a resort community, you have courtesy vehicles that are operating for a specific business.
Right.
Reason.
Right.
You're not gonna get that necessarily.
I ju, I just can recall in the dim recesses of my mind when we were talking this last year, that there are some state statutes that, that govern this stuff and I, and I don't, I don't know enough about.
Well, that's one thing, reason we came to you as well, okay, to, to try and do some of that, we've tried to do some research.
Yeah, yeah, no, uh, this, this is not, uh, uh, even disagreeing. It's just we, we should sort of all start from the same foundation on this, on this stuff. Um, Nick, can you, can you, uh, accomplish that?
No problem. Thanks, Keith.
And on that, have you, um, got, uh, either, either the, uh, committee or commission, I'm sorry, or the solicitors? Have, when was the last time our local ordinance was reviewed?
For taxis and, or at all?
Well, thoroughly, the.
For the, for the.
Motor vehicles for hire.
Uh, when we made the last ordinance changes, we're, we're, uh, when we actually implemented rules, because we only had ordinances and no rules. So that was probably within the past five or six years, somewhere in there, you know, I think.
Might be twen, might be twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Most recently.
I feel like I was on the council when we did it somehow.
Who was?
I feel like I was here when we were talking about that, now.
Not when, the ones I'm recalling.
I mean, not, not here, here, okay. So Nick, you can do that?
I can, thank you.
Any other, uh, be happy to take anybody's comments, but, uh, we'll figure it out. Anybody else on the council? Someone want to tell Molly she can come back in? Molly?
Hi.
Item five, Mike, do you want to, uh, you want to come up for this? Uh, and then Jen, you have, you have one as well. So we'll start with A and B.
Hello, Mike. How are you tonight? Very well. Good evening. Um, this is something that, uh, Jim, Jeremy, myself, uh, water and sewer department is working on. Uh, it's a permit process for, um, utility hookups that require the, uh, opening of a paved road, saw cutting, excavation for the hookup. And this is basically something to make sure that the property owner replaces the road back to uh, its original condition or an acceptable condition, that the repair to the road is correct.
Um, I, I just had a couple of questions, um, uh, I think this is, you know, the, these make a lot of sense, um. Are the, are the amounts enough? You know, you, you know, how do, do you have any sense?
Jim mirrored these from other towns.
From other towns?
Yes.
Don't you double them?
Um.
Pretty east gratitude, if I remember correctly.
Okay.
Um, and this will, uh, be for town and state roads. And the town roads will be repaired to state specifications. Rhode Island DOT will still be in charge of doing, uh, physical alteration permits, like a creation of a driveway.
Okay.
Um, fences, plantings, whatever it might be within a right of way. And the same thing with the town. The town will be responsible for, uh, town road, uh, you know, new driveways. This is just specifically for utility hookups.
So, uh, I'm sorry if I'm going, uh, uh, afield, uh, from that. But one of the things that, that I think we all notice is stone walls being taken down in order to, in order to access new driveways. Would this extend to, to that as well?
Yes. Um. I normally meet with the property owner that wants to do this, no matter which road it is, and we try and come up with, if there's a gapway already in the wall, we try and use that.
Hmm.
Um, if they're moving or adding, adding another driveway to fix the other one, close that one up. So we have as, as few breaks in the walls as possible.
Right, yeah. And do they have to post a bond for that?
Yes.
Yes, great, thank you. Brad?
Just curious, you said that the property owner has to move here, the road, the state's data, who supports the road. Both the town road is not the state's data, in other words, unpaid.
We'll get there eventually. I'm sorry, I'm.
Well, it doesn't apply to government jobs. Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Dirt roads are much easier to deal with.
Yes. Any questions from the council about this? Thank you, thank you, Mike. Uh, blah, 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 modular unit storage, who wants to do that one? Hello, Mike.
Good evening.
At once, right, rather than individual.
What's that?
We're gonna prove them all up.
I th, I think so, yeah.
Um, we actually had a form for these modular, uh, homes at, um, to be stored.
Yep.
In the beach parking lot, um, but it was never put on the fee schedule. So this is more to clean it up, more than anything.
I see. Any thoughts from the council on this one?
I did, um, so I know this as a modular house storage, but what about storage for, like, recently, there was a lot of material stored in the Scotch Beach parking. in the Scotch Beach parking lot to do that shoreline Band-Aid project, um, why wouldn't we be charging for that as well?
We probably could have, um, the way that was, it was a rotation of things coming in and out, um, I think we just opted not to. And the way this, um, we always had it for the town parking lots, we didn't really have anything for the state beach park, I mean, the Scotch Beach parking lot. And we could certainly add it or um, increase it to, you know, Scotch Beach also.
And then I'm curious, I'll admit, I didn't read the whole form, um, is there a requirement here for them to carry insurance?
It's a waiver to, uh, take the liability off the town, they have to sign.
So to go back to the materials that were stored in the state beach parking lot, it was a little crazy, um, you know, like when you go down there to walk the dog. It was difficult to park, um.
They were spoken to.
Well, so I guess what I'm saying though is that it was very attractive if you were a child to climb on those things. What if somebody was hurt, who's liable? So I'm just wondering, like, if someone, if, I mean, that was a private homeowner storing their construction materials on town property, nobody was hurt, which is best case scenario, but if someone had been hurt, I'm afraid that the town might have been liable. So, um, I'm wondering whether we shouldn't be charging for storage of any sort on these pieces of property, but then also requiring an insurance policy.
Yes. I also bounce back and forth when doing this, it, it might not be modular homes, it could be anything. Um, but I also put in there at the discretion of the director of public works, if we allow it at all. Um, time period, obviously the time of year, are we gonna do that? Um, we couldn't list all the things that could potentially, somebody might want to store. So it just certainly, it, it, at, at the discretion.
Did, uh, did we find out what the power company charges or was that a one-time?
I know it was a lot, one time. Lot more than fifty dollars a week.
That was kind of my question, is like, is fifty dollars a week the right number, um?
I don't know when that form was made, so I'm just going off the numbers that was on that form. Uh, it was more than likely, it was probably produced, uh, when the West Side Twenty went in, I don't know that for sure. But at that time, there was, uh, a lot of storage of boxes in those parking lots for considerable amount of time. I'm assuming that's when that form was, was created.
I was thinking it ought to be a number that encourages people to get it off of the public property. Uh, so I, I was thinking, you know, it actually ought to be fifty dollars a day, uh, not fifty dollars a week. I don't, you know. Tom's shaking his head, but.
I have.
Okay, when, when we talked about this before, I think we were talking about the parking lot and um, the roadside, anywhere that it happens, um, if it's town land, town or state. I mean, the neck road is town, the east side of the neck road is town land, and, um, uh, beyond that, I don't know where, where there's enough, I guess there's some places around the island, there's enough of a shoulder, but fifty, fifty does seem awfully low.
Thoughts?
Uh, good, yeah, I would agree with Martha, fifty a week seems low, I'm not sure fifty a day is where I'd go, but.
And Mike, this kind of just started happening with the modular homes, we started using the state beach parking lot, correct? I mean, before that, we didn't really let people store things in there.
That's the way I remember it.
Yeah.
It was the West Side Twenty.
Right, that was the beginning of it, I wonder if it should just be something that's on wheels, like a mod, modular only type situation? And not use it for materials? Like, clean it up a little bit, and then at your discretion makes.
I sort of agree with. Something that's not on wheels might become a little more permanent, yes.
Yeah, there was, I, I, I don't remember what it was, there was something else in that parking lot for a while, but, um, there wasn't the, you know, Orsted, um, um, grid project, but I, I don't remember.
So, Tristan, just, just so that we were capturing your, your point and, and what appears to be Mike's point on this, how would we change? How do we change this? Let's leave the money aside to accomplish what you're talking about.
I like Mike's, at Mike's discretion, and I write just towards modular only. Something on wheels.
And if somebody approaches with something other than a modular home, it's, it's a conversation we could have and at our, our discretion.
Um, do we need to change the language of this, or you, do, do you, do you get where we're going? I, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the, the, go ahead, Mary.
So, a couple of things, um, let me work with Mike on this, and then Mike, what I'm going to ask you to do is Mike's been attending, um, training with the trust. And they have different modules of training. Last week, what did you discuss? Liability, exposure, insurance and all that stuff. So based on some of the questions Molly asked, I would suggest you bring it back to the trust at your next class and say, this is what we're doing, we're doing on a piece of state property. What kind of language would you suggest we include in the application to protect the town?
I'm gonna get an A.
That's right. So.
It's gonna look like you did your homework.
That's right, um, and, and that's what's so important about these training classes and stuff.
Yes.
They discuss all this, so he can bring it back, I think we need to increase, change the form a little bit, tighten up some of the language. And, and I would suggest two hundred dollars a week.
Two hundred dollars a week makes sense, too. Great, uh, is that, okay.
Two hundred a week per box?
Per box.
Okay, it was fifty per box.
Yeah. Yep, get them up, get them on your own land, that's good.
And if you've got that beach retention junk, there has to be a price for that.
I'm sorry, say it again.
That, you know, like, um, that, like, um, you know, keeping mother nature from taking your yard away, whatever that stuff is called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My discretion.
I think we've all learned from that project, a number of things, um. Uh, great, and we're gonna do these all, you, you, you get that, we don't have to make any motions, Mike understands it.
You'll just make a motion.
We'll make a motion to, we're gonna ultimately make a motion to adopt all three, but, uh, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that we're, uh, doing what we need to. Jen, you want to go? Thank you, Mike, thank you, Tom.
We haven't increased, uh, land use related fees in quite some time, so I just took a look at other cities and towns and increased them slightly, a little bit. And it also, um, the legal notice that, that we're required to.
Yes.
Advertise for three weeks.
Yes.
That is pretty expensive, so.
Yeah.
That's included in the fee.
Oh, good.
And then I wanted to point out that we do not have an application fee for five thirteen's and, um, they, well, there's a bill, they're potentially in the building permit fee and a special use permit fee, but the application is by right.
Okay.
And then.
So that exclusion would remain under this proposal?
As long as you would like it to.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would, I don't know, I don't know about others, but.
And then our unified development review is new, so that could be any combination or it could be several combinations of uh, uh, different types of applications, so we didn't put a fee there because we won't know until we receive the application.
Yeah, I, I, I'm really glad you, you put that in, because, um, these new rules are likely to add significantly to the workload and expense. And in my opinion, that's something that ought to be borne to the greatest extent possible by the applicants, not by, uh, not by, uh, town government. Um, so as this is now, are you saying, hold your water, we're see, gonna see how this is? Or are we gonna enable you to establish them, or what, what, what's, what's your view on this?
So if we just leave it, um, where we just determined by staff, so if they are applying for a subdivision, or it, it would depend on what type of subdivision. If they're also applying for a special use permit, they no longer go to the zoning board, they may just go to the unified development review, which is the planning board. So it could be a combination, it could be a variance, so.
So let me ask, just, I'm just, just sort of gaming this out, uh, could we have, could we arrive at an hourly rate, for example? Or, you, you know, how, how, what would be the best way to, to, and Amy, I'll include you, you on this too, um, you know, to have the, the, the cost of those reviews and the work that will have to go on, um, better reflected in the, in the charge that's being made to the applicant?
Same reviews, my office, or, or solicitor, the planner, the engineer.
How about yes?
All of that.
Yeah.
Takes place.
Yeah.
And we're advertising.
Right.
And sometimes we're sending notices to others, I mean, now it's first-class.
Yeah, right.
So Jen, can you just clarify for me, the unified development review, is that a very complex, lots of different pieces? And you said go through it all at once to see the impacts of one thing versus the other?
It's a, thank you.
This was one of the groups of ordinances that we had to do.
So I had a question about the, um, it's, I think it's great that we don't charge for a five thirteen um, application, what if we were to charge to abandon the use?
Um, they would.
Because there's a process for abandoning it, right?
So it'd be a change of use and there is a permit fee. Fifty or eighty, so they're, they get charged for change of use, so if they go from an ADU to a accessory dwelling unit or accessory residential structure, then they would have to do the change of use through the building permit portal, so there's a record of it and there's a process. So that would be a fee.
You know, I'm just saying, in, in order to support a four, you know, like, to support your own housing, don't charge on the, if they're going to create it, but if you're going to take it away, that's a higher fee, or, or a fee, not a higher fee, a fee.
You could do that. And there are fees associated with the five thirteen's, such as especially use permit fee and then the building permit fees, if it's new construction or a change of use. But the by right application process that I review, my office, then we don't have. And I, up to you, but should.
So when you say determined by staff, uh, on the combination of applications, um, for, for unified development review, you would contemplate including our cost as a town for engineering and legal?
If you put that in the fee schedule, but if it's not identified in the fee schedule, I don't.
I mean, that would be, I mean, my, please disagree with me, yeah, like, I, 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 I just sort of feel like we have this new process that has been established in state statute, uh, that will, um, place potentially significant new uh, burdens on staff and on our, uh, legal and engineering resources.
We have five unified development review applications right now.
And to, to me, that, I, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that, that the applicant, the applicant shouldn't pay for that. He's a double.
You have language under, um, the amendments to the zoning ordinance, I think really is, it's, you could. Maybe adding, if you're looking to add that language to land use fees. Okay. So it's, this is under application to the zoning ordinance and that one a hundred dollars. Plus the cost of advertising, general highway, chances, and it's, so I would be even more explicit and, uh, planner, engineer.
Is that in an ordinance or a fee schedule?
Even, I mean.
But I think that, I think it has a source from an ordinance, but, yeah, that's my, that's my.
Can we, can we hold on that and put it on our next agenda, please, because I, I, I would like to review that, um. Alright, I mean, do people agree that we should consider that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just, I'm just making sure I wasn't, this is just like, off on one of my, my own tensions here. Alright. Uh, any other comments, thoughts? Are you happy?
Yeah.
So we're, we're working with someone, right?
That particular one, I think we have to figure out whether we need to change the ordinance to be more, uh, as Amy says, more, uh, more enumerative of, of the things for which we will be charging, right?
To break out the legal notice from it, um, just because I think, uh, we typically group everything together and trying to break that out could be.
Great, I, I'm actually not talking about changing anything you, you suggested, I'm saying that we may, I think we may need to refine to ensure that we're, you know, recouping expenses that taxpayers will be paying for someone's application. And it just seems like, you know, the fairer way to do that is to ensure that we recover those costs.
It's typically planner, engineer, solicitor.
Great. Okay. So Mike, you're clear on, uh, just to, just to reiterate, you're clear on the, on, on the, um, refinements to the modular unit storage?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and you're clear, uh, Jen, you're square, we're gonna work on this other thing. Okay, so can I have a motion to approve those three fee schedule changes?
I'll make a motion to, uh, enhance the fee schedule for the uh, road opening modular storage unit land use fees.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, no.
That was the fee as amended.
Yeah. Uh, alright, Homestead, Amy?
Um, so there is, I, I don't know if you have copies up there, I think it was late to clerk base, but there is a new memo to frame today's conversation, um, I really wanted to pick up where we left off last week and to recap the idea of, um, the homestead exemption right now being step one of a multi-step process, so that people can understand the sort of narrower scope that we're talking about implementing in the current year. And then what might be following on in the next round, if you will, sort of as an acknowledgement that what we can accomplish today for the bills that will go out this summer is pretty limited in terms of how much we can get off the ground immediately. Um, and so that's gonna, right now is looking at like a pure homestead exemption, um, which is applicable to owner occupied residential units, um, and it's easiest to talk about this and what it doesn't include, uh, meaning, um, it doesn't right now include mixed use and it doesn't include, um, year-round resident tenants, which is a concept I think the council wants to pursue and may be included in step two of this process. But that, that requires a lot more complex language and ordinance that we can't possibly lift right now. So again, step one, what we're looking at in this tax year is just owner occupied residential. this tax year is just owner occupied residential. I did add, for those of you who are playing close attention, residential condos, which are technically a separate state use code. Um but th- those can be included in this group this year, um and then one to five units where one of those is owner occupied by a um a year-round resident. Um defining year-round resident is something we haven't really necessarily buttoned up. Um so if if you're looking in the requirements section there, one of the ways that the solicitors propose doing this is using the resident definition in our ordinances today, which comes from section two dash two. You know, do I have that here? And that includes the phrasing full-time Block Island residency status is not affected by absence, whatever the reason of up to three months in any calendar year, providing that the resident is also a registered Block Island voter. Um so that's the phrasing that currently exists in our ordinance. Um whether we want to and and should carry that forward into the exemption, I think is still for council conversation. Um some of the other requirements we talked about is that um the owner would be signing an affidavit identifying their Block Island home as their legal domicile, um that your driver's license, assuming you have one, has a Block Island address, and that if you are a voter, um your voter registration is also assigned to your Block Island address. So those are the sort of the requirements we would set forth, um we are drafting an application so that when the council meets next week to set the public hearing, um we'll have a draft application to look at that supports this. As well as some um updated ordinance language, so we'll have those two things for you next week. One of the other outstanding items is the amount of the exemption. And so on the back of that page that you have is a little bit of math, just to start to get a sense of what those exemption levels look like and would mean on a tax bill. Um so again, these are exemptions off of the assessed value. It might actually be easier to read the lower panel first, which says for properties valued half million dollars, a million dollars, one point five, two million, and three million dollars, what would be the exemption value at different percentages, so for a million dollar house with a ten percent homestead exemption, your savings, given our current tax rate, would be four hundred eighty-two dollars. People kind of following that
Yep.
math, um so you're looking across anywhere from zero percent exemption, which is where we are today. Um I ran that out to twenty percent. And then at different um valuation amounts, because it is a percentage that scales a little bit differently than if it were just a fixed dollar. Question so far?
No, this is very helpful.
Um, I have a question, do you have a recommendation?
I am not making a recommendation.
Okay.
But it gave you a lot of numbers. Yeah, that's, that said, let me walk you down to the couple sentences under the numbers. Because it does start to frame some of these things and and sort of what starts to make sense, um because we still need to collect the same levy, and we've talked a lot in the last two months about the size of the pie. And if we are providing relief over here, those dollars still need to be collected into the town, and so um I did look at two different scenarios, nothing else changes, and there are a lot of assumptions in here. Like how many properties qualify, that's a big variant. Um we talked about that we think there are a maximum of four hundred twenty-five possible, it's unlikely that they're all eligible. Um so for these scenarios, I assumed two hundred and fifty properties. I think that might be high, but until we collect applications, we have no idea. The other big variable is um because it is property specific, what are the valuations of those particular applicants? Um that starts to swing the numbers as well.
Right.
Yes. So of our sort of population, the average assessed value, not of our entire island, but just this potential pool um of homestead exemptions, um the average assessed value is about one point two million. And so again, all those assumptions, if we were looking at a ten percent homestead exemption, the mill rate for the rest of the tax base would go from six dollars two cents to about six dollars eleven cents, about one and a half percent increase. If you're looking at a twenty percent homestead exemption, your mill rate goes from, there's a typo there, it should be six point zero two. Uh, oh no, that's right, from six point zero two to six point two, which is a three percent increase. Um so your, the rest of your tax base is gonna see either one, a half percent increase for a ten percent homestead exemption, a three percent tax increase to offset a twenty percent homestead exemption in those scenarios. So that's where I say, I didn't give you a recommendation, but we're starting to put some bounds around what those look like and how you balance the needs of the entire population, population against each other.
It's also important to note publicly that that these numbers are for tax year twenty twenty-three.
Yes, yes, um so it doesn't start to consider the tax impact of the budget that we're considering at financial town meeting, which we know has some substantial tax increases in it. For context, I didn't bring that page, but we did run the seventeen point nine percent tax increase that's proposed in the budget on a million dollar property, and I think that was eight hundred ninety-four dollars was the increase um for a million dollar property on, based on that tax increase. Give or take a couple dollars, so just under a thousand dollars is what that tax increase would be on a million dollar valuation.
Right. So um what does the council think, should we have uh James uh has been, James Callahan has been working on drafts, should we have him press on to uh draft more fully? Step one for our consideration? We need that.
We need that.
Else we need?
We're gonna need next week, um when you set that public, public hearing date, we will have to make a decision on what the percentage amount will be.
Yeah.
A lot of communities do phrase it as an up to.
Yes.
And then it is set annually by the council. I would say out of the gate for us. And given the short window that we're working in, I would not have your up to number be very far from your actual number that we implement, I think that just adds confusion. So, you know, I I let's narrow in as as closely, closely as we can on what you want that exemption amount to be. But we will have to decide that next week.
Fair enough. Any questions for Amy? Anybody in the crowd want to ask any questions about this, because I think it's important that people understand it? No?
First, the applications.
But can I just take a minute then, they're not ready yet, but um because we want to implement this for this tax year, the application window is going to be very, very narrow. It will only be in the month of June. So assuming the council sets a public hearing date, they'll do that for the end of May, assuming that it passes at the public hearing. We will only take applications from June first to June thirtieth. And that is it for the year, um there is no exceptions, there'll be no alternatives, because we need to get those bills out in July, so we need to pay attention.
Are there any special rules on how many have to vote yes for it, is it a four fifths, or is it just a majority?
No, it's just a simple majority, it's a regular ordinance of the town.
And then I think it's important to restate that um that there's a phase two to this, right?
Yes.
Do you mind like restating that for anybody who might be listening?
Sure, and again, this is all preliminary discussion, so everything that is ultimately decided is subject to the council enacting an ordinance as such, but the items that we couldn't implement this year include being able to have a residential mixed use. Uh so you have, I'm gonna pick on you, this is right here, um you have an inn that also serves as a residence. Right now, that doesn't qualify under the homestead exemption, but the council has discussed that being a scenario that they would want to recognize and give the benefit of a residential tax relief in some amount. Another example would be a um single-family dwelling that is rented year-round to a resident with a twelve-month lease. So it's not owner occupied, which means it doesn't qualify under our homestead exemption this year. But again, the the goal of extending that tax relief to the tenant ultimately by not having their rents increased, um and having their residency qualify that property as residential uh is something we can accomplish now, but would like to engineer for next year, and we see the models that exist to do that, so that's another example. Five thirteen is is similar to that in that right now, if you have a five thirteen and your main house is owner occupied, you qualify for the homestead exemption. If you have a five thirteen where the main house is not owner occupied year-round, but you have a year-round tenant as you must under a five thirteen, that property does not qualify. So again, at the council level, with the public discussion, do we want that property to have the benefit of that property tax relief? So those are the things we're trying to build into step two, which would more generally provide residential tax relief as opposed to owner occupied residents.
Come up.
Um I have a question, if I can phrase this correctly. I'm all for the exempt, the exemption, I think it's a great idea. How is the difference in the t- decrease of tax dollars going to the town from us paying less? How is that made up, because we're looking at a big increase in our budget? Where is that difference coming into play?
Yeah, so um the rest of the tax base does have to ha- see a higher mill rate in order to keep the collection the same, so in the example that we were looking at, which is very hypothetical, and based on the current year tax numbers, um in order to support a ten percent homestead exemption for about two hundred and fifty properties, the mill rate would go up about one and a half percent on the rest of the properties in order to keep everything balanced, is that clear? Ooh, you're chasing our tail.
Yeah.
Yes.
Pie, pie stays the same, it's just how big your slice is.
Yeah.
This is great, thank you, do do we need to make any other decisions to make next week?
No, but you better be ready.
Yeah, oh yeah. We're ready. We're ready. We're gonna do financial reports, Amy, do you want to just point, i- is it, do you want to just point to things, or do you want to go through the whole document, or does the council want to go through the whole doc, you know, I'm I'm happy to do it whatever way I know.
There's really not much new to talk about, and really, nothing that I would call your attention to specifically. The trends are the same, spending is a bit higher than this year, some really bright spots in revenue. Others are very even, um so there's really nothing particular, but I'm happy to take questions if anyone had them.
I didn't have any. Anybody else have any?
I would say also, we're we're in the no stage of the year, where we are just managing towards keeping that budget constrained for the next three months, so.
You want a soft landing?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Amy. Receive a report regarding Coast Guard station uses and planned improvements and set date for a visit. Who's up?
Tom's gonna take this.
Oh, okay.
Information, I guess he met with Mike and Philip.
Thank you, Tom, do you have your slides?
Um so I have spent some time looking through all the paperwork, um I found um a lot of capital requests going back to two thousand and seven issued by Mark for many of the things that I've got on my sheet that we put together with uh Mike and Bill and um Kate and 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 the chief, he was coming, because he, we met just this morning on things for that, and I'm gonna guess all of you know the 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 setup down there, we have the the station and the bar, and the barracks or the um motor pool, and then the boathouse. And boathouse is pretty much run by harbors, the barrack, the um motor pool is pretty much run by the police and the station has a resident manager, used to be Mark, now it's Phil, and um that is used. And in fact, only that apartment that he lives in is heated, the rest of the building is not, but it's for the summer use, uh seasonal employees, um in this coming year, we have um CSOs, harbors, and recreation folks staying there. And we're gonna, we're still, we're gonna keep the motor pool for the police, the, I've got a a litany of things that need doing, some are emergencies, um that'll be covered by um my maintenance budget, which won't go very far. And the rest is what we need to be thinking about in future planning. And I'll just read, because it's easy to make. So the the upstairs, I'm sorry, the the um upgrades to this uh property manager's apartment, it's uh, there's holes in the floor where you can see through the basement, there's holes in the outside wall where birds would cut in, starlings and such, you can put your hand right into the wall, the windows and doors leak um right into the apartment. The um housing for the um seasonal employees is pretty sad. The cabinets are falling off the wall to the point where we took the doors off just so they didn't fall off. Um the kitchen, uh we're gonna move the appliances from the Thomas property into that kitchen just to spruce thirty-year-old equipment, the twenty-year-old equipment.
Right.
And and um the the emergency is the furnace, um furnace is a hot air furnace, and there's the burn box is porous now, so you can imagine that's very healthy, so we're gonna get that replaced um over the summer, and and under maintenance activities, plumbing and wiring is old and um no longer doing its job, there's wires hanging out of the wall, there's plumbing that's been abandoned, it's it's a mess. The kitchen and common room need to be gutted for the sake of the um summer employees and their rooms upstairs on the second and third floor, we have the maximum twelve beds up there, but having twelve, uh having two, three-bedroom apartments on the third floor require all the interior doors to be left open for egress or taken off, actually, so we we keep it to eleven, which keeps us better in the code. They, there's no window trim, the the windows were replaced but never trimmed out. Sometimes, some some places, the walls and doors were never trimmed out, so there's basically just, just to keep it the way it is, and that's not discussing any other use than what we are doing today, um is is gonna be a a lot of work. Uh the safe, so the south end gable, we took off the fire escape, once we were allowed to have just one on the north end. Um the window, the big door, the the doors out to that fire escape are now windows, but they were set wrong, so they leaked down into basement. That kind of thing. Um in the motor pool, we we went through today, um we have a plan that we started with Moynihan, but it was based more on a barracks than what's really happening now, and that is getting some quality um officers for the summer state police, I believe, and I'll let the chief take over there, but um one or two nice apartments with private baths is more to what we are gonna be doing than having basically a hot bunking in a barracks type thing, so um those, the incentive, uh anyway, so our our plan now our plan now is to have two apartments with um private baths up there, and then have a common kitchen and a common you know, living room, TV room, and down on the lower level and use up two bays for that, and then we would still have two bays for trucks and boat repair and and that kind of stuff. Uh we would have to put the back entrance through the north wall to the outside, right now that's back stairs just goes into one of the garage.
Right, yes.
Doesn't count. We'll take out all the generators, um we got a lot of crap stored there and and um that such thing, I um met with Kate on the boathouse. Um next time you all go to Point Judith, look at the boathouse at the station there in the in Galilee. You'll see that they have dormers on the on two sides, the the north and south side of that building. And I met with um the Coast Guard commander in charge, I guess they call him, is um they put And I met with um, the Coast Guard commander in charge, I guess they call him, is um, they put that up. I didn't meet with him. I talked to him, sorry. Um, they built that to be a barracks. And there's plenty of headroom. It's a wonderful space, Phil will tell you, and and we'd like to do the same there because we're running out now that we won't have CSOs at the Thomas property. Um, we're running out of space for seasonal workers and we could build an interior staircase and have um, room for eight people up there, let's say a four man, a four bunk men's side and a four bunk women's side, and um, that would complement our seasonal housing so far as I can see forward.
I'm I'm really glad we're talking about scheduling something soon to to go over because I I have the advantage, I don't know whether others have, of actually having seen a lot of this stuff in the last eighteen months or so. And I think that that is the classic picture being worth a thousand words there uh, to me, anyway.
So there, um, just to finish out the boathouse, a lot of things that um, are little things like there's only two outlets in the whole boathouse. We we need to make that a proper work area. Um, Kate wants water brought out to the dock for rinsing the boats off. So there's, the upweller is gonna be there in the new floating docks that we're bidding for, putting up bids for this week. And um, just a lot of you know, bringing something from the nineteen fifties up to the twenty twenties somewhere.
Yes.
On the grounds, we wanna remove the old tennis court fencing, clean up the yards there. We've got old buoys, all, you know, some, a lot of old stuff that could go away. That'll boost boost the parking for the seasonal employees in the uh, summer and then boat storing in winter. Um, if if we stay with just two people in the motor pool, then the septic that's there is fine. If we go over two families, two couples, it would have to be enlarged. It was, it's now just a repair on a failed system. And if we wanna, anybody wants to put eight people in there, we'd have to upgrade the source, add fifty grand to that bill.
Yes.
Pretty much. It's right on, being right on the water.
Right.
We have, um, we wanna uh, adjust the plumbing. Right now, we can't turn off the the motor pool without turning off the chief's house. And Sarah Sue says she would rather not. So we wanna um, have a a way to s- turn off the motor pool without turning off the chief's house. You can imagine they're in line, so
Sure.
One set off the other.
So Tom, can I just clarify? So you have a lot on this? This is not part of the capital plan? This is all stuff you're gonna do with?
No, hopefully the the only real emergency item, to be clear, is the is getting the furnace fixed, because that's not healthy.
Okay, so all the other stuff will be down the road and added to the capital plan?
If you have a capital budget in front of you, there's there's some money in in, we lost Amy, in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and there's one point five and twenty-six.
Okay.
So um, I just wanna keep those numbers there if at all possible. Um, you know, they're they're ripe for plucking if we get into trouble on future meetings.
Yes.
Hey, Tom, I I just couldn't find my pictures. The um, boathouse down there now, and I I should know this, I just can't visualize it. Does it have any dormers?
No.
Ours doesn't have any.
Correct. In fact, there's no way up there without a ladder.
Right.
And there's ten feet of headroom up there. Yeah, and and Coast Guard took advantage of that, that some, I'm gonna guess, I don't know who would know, but um, ten fifteen years ago, the coast, the Point Judith station upgraded their boathouse. It's probably twenty-five years ago, at my, at my age, but yeah.
Yeah, I've also got a picture of that that I couldn't find because it's like the Point Judith, near, Point Judith boathouse at in Galilee, out on near Gansett.
Yeah, so the point is their station and their boathouse are not.
The Rhode Island thing.
Once on the point.
And how many dormers does that have?
Four.
That is four.
Two north, two south.
Oh, two north, two south.
I don't know that we, it's a four sided gable roof, that's a hip roof, so we'd have to see what worked best with the access.
Right.
But Secocha has done um, a bunch of study, asked them to do four you know, blue sky concepts for the barracks. We would ask them to do the same for that.
Sure. Yeah.
There are these places that have all this space that we just except in our land.
Yep. I have, we have plans for that too.
Indeed.
Um, I'm, you know, I I would ask Phil take the lead on your tour. I I certainly will be there. I'm sure Mary Ann and Mark, Mike will be too, but whatever is convenient for you guys and Phil. You know, obviously, the sooner the better before we get into the season.
Yeah, we definitely have to post a meeting. Can we, can we look at calendars now? Just? Thursday and Friday, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
I can, I can do it.
Does that work for people? Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth? Noon time? Does noon time make sense?
On which day?
The twenty-sixth.
Friday.
Friday, the twenty-sixth of April.
That's two weeks.
Yeah.
At noon?
Noonish, yeah.
Why don't you just go Monday, that way Phillip's there?
Uh, that that that's fine with me. I was ju- I literally just opened up.
Monday, the twenty-ninth.
Nope, that doesn't work. Yeah.
Is Tuesday the thirtieth bad?
That's tough for you? Okay. Wednesday, May first. Wednesday is bad for you.
Wednesday is the building official day for me, but
Okay.
I can, I can move it frankly. You guys do what you want.
Yeah, exactly. How does October eleventh work? We can't post it.
The second? Is that going too far?
No, I think we wanna do it. Right, you know.
Okay.
Thursday, May second.
Someone wants?
Noon. Right, got that?
Just bring a rod and reel and it'll fit right in.
Yes, exactly. Will be that. Uh, excellent. Is town manager report next?
Did you just repeat that the time and then?
Noon, Thursday, May second. They're working. People are welcome to come. It's it's worth seeing, I think, you know, it it really is worth seeing. All right, thank you, Tom. Town manager report.
So, um, you folks have my report in front of you, um. If you have any questions on it, by all means ask, but I would like to highlight a couple of things that um, are mentioned in my report. Um, however, they don't have any additional information because uh, folk events took place um, on Monday and Tuesday this week. Monday, we did have Ride Dot down here, um, or out here, they sent over three staff members. Um, specifically to look at Spring Street. If any of you have driven Spring Street recently, you will see here's some some barriers along the the guardrails there. Uh, the recent winter storms have really um, eroded uh, a good portion of the these, that road and that uh, sea wall that leads to it. Um, so Ride Dot did come out here. Um, finally, um, we chatted with a woman by the name of Pam Carter, who I've been working with probably for now, um, almost three years. She's been assigned to us. She's the director of planning um, with Ride Dot. And um, they went back. That day, there was a two o'clock meeting with senior staff people at Ride Dot. And based on that, um, the visit at from Ride Dot, um, they determined that the recent storm damage and the undermining of that road. Um, they have agreed, it's an emergency. They have submitted an emergency work order to get some work done on that road as soon as possible.
Great.
Um, I would have, um, I don't have specific dates of what exactly they're going to be doing. They took, talked about two different options. One was to get something in place and repaired so that the road will be safe and available for the summer traffic, and then they come back in the fall. That's what some of the stuff we were talking about while they were here and and over the phone. But I think until we get definitive answers from them, we're not sure what's going to happen. But they do realize and re- uh, realize that um, that is an emergency. They have to clear that road in emergency, so um, they've asked uh, their maintenance staff to proceed with immediate um, moving forward on the project. Um, I will keep the council updated as I get more information.
What did they say about the neck road?
The neck road, they weren't too overly concerned about.
Uh, they were definitely more concerned about uh, Spring Street.
Sure, yeah.
Concerned about corn neck, you know, they they certainly saw all the damage from from this year. Um, but realize that that's because we fix it each year, it's it just doesn't make sense. Something more permanent has to go in there. And they they do realize that.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann.
And the second visit, um, that.
I asked a question about that. Um, this, I I I ask this all the time, I'm sorry. The sand in the parking lot is going where?
It it's gonna go there on the um, the revetment there, you know, where the along with the dredgings.
Great, thanks a lot.
Yep.
Um, my second meeting was today, uh, Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, Terry Gray was out. He came out on the eight thirty ferry. Um, he was with us until close to one P M and then he headed off uh, with Scott Cummings. Um, his, the first about thirty minutes of the meeting, he did meet with uh, a couple of members of Sea Level Rise. He has a um, a very strong interest in sea level rise and resiliency, and we talked extensively about that, some of the programs that we're doing and what's going on across the state. From there, we did take a ride out to the bluffs, the bluffs like Spring Street. Um, the recent uh, winter storms have um, caused some problems there, especially at the bottom of the bluff. The drop is now about fifteen feet. Um, when we first noticed that about maybe two months ago, we did notify him and he asked us to close that area up. Uh, he came out and looked at it. He said, we gotta keep the area closed off for the summer. Um, and then come back in the fall, they will decide what are going to be next steps. Um, fifteen foot drop is a pretty significant drop down there. What we did speak to him extensively about is the need um, to have access for rescued personnel down to that beach area. So we talked to him extensively about that, um, and about us mowing a path right next to the stairs. It was done some years ago. It has grown back. Um, he's all for doing that. He said, by all means, we've got enough price to do it. He said, by all means, go ahead. You can include it in what we do for the maintenance that they uh, reimbursed us for twenty thousand dollars. He said, before he does that, he does need to meet with um, C R M C Director Jeff Willis because of the fact that it will need C R M C approval. And he's gonna move forward with an emergency uh, application for that to get that, so we'll get that work done. Uh, this other thing we spoke about um, was um, the Galilee um, area. Uh, if anyone's been over there, um, the infamous Lighthouse Inn is gone. Um, over the next uh, month, um, there'll be resurgence in that area in the front of the area, Red Cross Street from where the Perilions. There will be a grass area with some picnic tables. One of the things um, I brought to the director's attention a couple of years ago, um, based on some feedback we received from residents here, is the parking and the fact that if you go, you know, you park your vehicle in that back parking lot in the summer, especially those that have medical situations, you have young families with well, baby visits and stuff like that. They come back, there's no parking available. So he um, took that away with him and he said, in the area that where they've done the demo and what they'll be doing there, that he has, he will identify um, up to twenty, over twelve, twenty spots specifically for Black Island residents. That'll be specifically assigned to Black Island residents that have the need to have these signed parking and will be able to park there all the time. So if someone has a significant medical condition that requires them to go off island or anything like that, there'll be twenty spots available. We haven't worked out the details as to how we identify those people or assign those spots, but they can go off island, go to their appointments, come back, and the spot that they were in will be theirs.
I think that acknowledgement is a real victory, Mary Ann. I really, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. He's, he's been wonderful with works.
I know, you know. Parking for town council members.
He said, we, I can decide.
So, um, we had, I had two extremely busy days with state officials, and I must say, uh, I'm pleased with where we've ended up with them.
Yes.
Although Point uh, Spring Street is not good news at all, but it it looks like we gained the attention.
It's gonna be attended to, yeah. Um, I had two things that I wanted to mention when I, when I read the report and both people are here. I think one of the many uh, reasons uh, that um, I was so supportive of 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 Paul and Mike and their new roles is that they would hit the ground running, and and this report really demonstrates that. I just wanted to say thank you. You know, at at a meeting in public, um, when you, when you see when you see in this report, and if you haven't read the town manager's report, uh, uh, this is a bulleted list for uh, the all departments, but I'm just sort of calling out uh, police and public works. There's a lot of work going on. Uh, and I just wanted to say thank you. Any questions for Mary Ann? David?
I simply wanted to applaud Mike and his highway crew team for the weed whacking up at uh, Rodman's Hollow along off two thirds of the stretch to Black Rock Road. You know, the, we know the magnificent work that the team has done over on the roadside of all of the stone walls, basically the whole island. It's just phenomenal. It's always been a challenge to get the rail mower to go over the backside at Rodman's Hollow to do a similar job. I mean, you couldn't do it. So this year, this time these um, men went out there with weed whackers and got it done in less than a day. And uh, Mike hopes to keep that up on a routine basis. Of course, I remind everybody that the town, in fact, owns that property and uh, even though they don't maintain all of it, any little bit, every little bit helps the private organizations that do.
Yeah.
Um, so it's great to see that. I know Mike's fully on board. Actually, Mary Ann and Charlie, uh, Charlene and Claire Stover, when she was executive director and Mike and myself as an interested party, were up there first spring of COVID, just looking at that particular project.
Yes.
Um, so collectively, we'll all try to keep it looking as good as it looks today.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks to you.
Anything else on the town manager's report? Guys? No?
I wanna talk about the helicopter.
The plane, the plane crash?
The fake news.
I know, so
I just thought that
We, I I got, I got an email as uh, uh, literally Mary Ann sent us a text. Everybody heard about this Coast Guard helicopter that had some mechanical issues, and I got a an email from a mainland uh, news organization. Literally within seconds of that text saying, we hear there was a plane crash. I replied and CC'd Mary Ann and I was like, I don't know any details, and Mary Ann responded. And the the news organization replied back saying, you know, were there any injuries? Were the it's like, oh my goodness, it was like the old Don Henley song. Uh, anyway.
Make it clear, everything was fine.
Everything was fine.
I do just wanna make one point about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I obviously have spoke to the the pilot extensively, because he was in my backyard.
Yes.
You know, getting, getting parts. And when I first, you know, walked out there, I was kinda joking with him, did you not see the no parking sign? And what he said to me was that it was a sensor in their transmission. Um, and what he said to me was that it was a sensor in their transmission. It's basically, it's called the chip sensor. And what it is, is basically a giant magnet. And it attracts any pieces of metal that come out of the transmission. And when, when that sensor goes off, something really bad is about to happen. And what he said to me was he looked at the dunes and he looked at the airport and he looked at the dunes and he looked at the airport and he said, there's no houses between me and the dunes. There's houses between me, and that was his thought process. His thought process was, where can I put this down safely? And not potentially cause any harm if this thing does decide to fall apart. So just so you guys know that.
Thank you.
You know, that's some of their, their thought process of why they went to the dunes, because they didn't wanna fly over any populated areas where there would be a potential for
A catastrophic failure.
Bad, bad incident.
Wow.
We can tell the news.
Props to them for their decision making process in my book.
Yes. Thank you, Paul. Uh, shall we move on to um appointments? Um, uh, first is uh HTC, Historic District Commission, um, which has had some quorum issues, and I'm, I must admit Millie, until I uh saw the section of the charter again, I had, I had forgotten. First, first of all, the first warden gets to appoint the members of HTC, uh, uh. You're serving at my pleasure. Uh, but we have um from three to seven, so i- it it struck me that there are a couple of ways to skin this cat, right?
I think that there's only one. Um, and there are seven members of HTC seated right now.
Right.
Uh, so if you, if you did decide to to make alternate members, you would be reducing the membership to five and make two alternates.
Yes.
So uh it would be that or keeping it as is. I I did talk with Jen about this and and I think that she's left, but she wanted to have that conversation with the, with the commissioners first. Um, because that's something that hasn't been talked about at their table.
I'm all for it. This is just, you know, an attempt to solve a challenge. Uh, so I I don't have any particular um, I I I think Martha and I had talked about uh alternates because I think we we added alternates to something, uh. Harbors, yes, 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 which was having similar quorum issues. Uh, so.
This makes the best.
Yeah, great. Thank you for uh for that uh uh reference to the charter because frankly, I I chaired the charter. Molly and I, Molly and I were both on charter and and I didn't, I I I don't think we even went anywhere near the the uh Historic District Commission.
Yourself then.
Yes, yeah, right. Yeah, exactly. Um, we have a couple of resignations. I was sad to see uh uh Lars Trotzen uh has resigned from Water and Sewer. Uh, and uh Justin Dunlop from Commission uh of Motor Vehicles for Hire, and they've both served um uh ably, honorably, and well, and uh uh I really appreciate that. Uh, so those, those um do do we have to make a motion to accept them or they merely exist, if I recall correctly? And then next, next meeting, they'll start to show up as openings? Did you put them on? Great. Terrific. Uh, we do uh have a few appointments. Uh, one is the appointment of a member to the Police Advisory Committee and is Arlene Tunny or only, we have Arlene Howell. Um. Uh, Brad Marthens, Mark McGuire. Didn't we appoint, oh, we appointed Mark two as um, right? Any thoughts about these um uh candidates?
I would, I I would make a motion to appoint Arlene Tunny to that board.
Okay. Is there a second? Any comments? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, pose no? Eyes have it. Thank you, Molly. Uh, and then we have um what constitutes really sort of a reappointment of Phoebe McMillan to uh Water and Sewer. Um, she has been uh serving, is she serving as an alternate now?
Yes.
Uh, and I think is uh n- not only uh technically competent, but um really engaged. Uh, and I I I think she's just terrific. So if there's a motion to uh appoint Phoebe to um uh both Sewer District and Water District, please? Is there a second? All those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose no? The ayes have it. Point out for folks, there's a opening on Commission for, Commission on Motor Vehicles for Hire, uh, a Sewer District and a Water District. And soon there will be, no, that that's, you put those on there. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose no? The ayes have it. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.